Six o'clock, so. Call the Soto Planning Commission to order.
Jared?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
McPherson?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
And Commissioners Allen Brand and Zawalin are absent this evening.
Okay, uh, the general business in front of us tonight is, first of all, to approve the agenda. I was thinking maybe we could make a swap in there, anybody like to make a suggestion?
Uh, I make a suggestion, a recommendation that we swap item six with item seven as a whole on each one of them and just do the new business first and then the old business.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing. Yes, we would like to therefore switch items six and seven in the, uh, on the agenda. Uh, in the packet are the minutes from the last meeting, has everybody had a chance to read those? And were there any objections or changes?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve and a second? And, uh, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, extend. All opposed, motion, they are approved. Uh, is there any disclosure of conflicts of interest on any business in front of us tonight? Seeing none, I'll move on to item three D, disclosure of outside communications regarding anything in front of us tonight. Hearing none, I'll move on to call the public, members of the public who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentation is for information only and no action will be taken and there is a four-minute time limit, so if anybody's got anything to say out there, now's a good time. So, okay, well, we will skip the, uh, call the public. What we have, uh, next, item five A is a public hearing for a special use permit for twenty-nine, one forty-five, West the Third Street. What we'll do on this, we'll have staff report and then we'll, uh, open a public session and have input from the public. We'll close the public session and we'll have commission discussion and then we'll, uh, somebody will make a motion and we'll vote on it. So, we're starting with staff report and, um, have a head of breath.
Thank you, Chairman. Before you is a special use permit to allow a wedding reception hall in the RA zoning district. As you recall, several months ago, we went through the process to adopt a text amendment to allow this type of use. Uh, we, you know, studied things about the outdoor grilling and parking and fire protection and all the things that go along with this, uh, particular use. It's really all started about a year ago when we had a couple that wanted to consider purchasing this property and taking it for a wedding venue. We didn't have that kind of, uh, use allowed in our city code anywhere, so that's why we went through the process for the text amendment. That, uh, group fell through, they didn't proceed with it, but a new owner purchased the property and saw an opportunity to go ahead and add this to their already existing, uh, tree farm. They're, they're operating the tree farm as a, selling trees, but they're also having agricultural use of growing trees and things like that. So, they saw an opportunity to continue with that process and we are now before to hear with the special use permit.
They're not gonna mulch.
They're not gonna mulch and actually the property, the special, there's not, no mulching is involved in any way, shape or form with this proposal. Actually, the special use permit is only on the western portions of the site, so, uh, and it only pertains to wedding reception halls. Anyway, back in May, we met with the applicant and their representatives are here tonight. They prepared the site plan for us, so if you've got any questions for them after my presentation, you can call on them to go through some of the more particular items if you've got some questions directly for them. They've included a narrative out, including their intended uses. There is a site plan which is required for a special use permit, proof of ownership, et cetera, et cetera. I also included the text amendment that we went through for wedding venues, so you can refer to that also if you want to hear the staff report. We are required to send letters to nearby landowners with a two-hundred-foot buffer around the site. And we did that, sent out certified letters, there's a sign about on the property. And the meeting tonight was advertised in the legal record for public involvement. Review of the general zoning piece of property is zone RA residential agriculture. The intent of this district is to provide opportunities for agriculture that promote single, uh, farm and development of rural areas. Typically, we have single-family residents, crop protection, livestock, horse boarding, and then also nursing care facilities are somehow allowed. It's just one of those kind of things that, uh, maybe we ought to take a look at, but it is a permitted use by right in an RA district. Going through the review of matters to be considered, character of the neighborhood, including but not limited to zoning, existing improved land use planning, density, natural features and open space. The site is mentioned as RA's residential agriculture, rural residential housing is in the vicinity of the area. While it's not directly attached, there's some properties, several properties to the east on Cedar Creek Road, uh, into that part of town that sort of overlooked this area. Certainly, those residents could be affected as far as visual impacts, traffic, things like that. North of the site is some rural residential housing. To the very far west is a very large tract of agricultural use. Anyway, and the whole site is about twenty-six acres, staff's evaluation is, uh, positive on this site, it will not affect the character of the neighborhood as far as granting this request. Compatibility of the proposed zoning and uses permitted therein with the zoning and uses of nearby properties. Once again, uh, we'll kind of go over a lot, this again, it's RA, the proposed operation should not affect the compatibility or existing anticipated uses within the area. Tree farm activities will continue, they will be, uh, operating that as originally intended. They will also sell Christmas trees during, uh, the holiday season. So, we're positive in favor of granting their request. The extent in which there is a need in the committee for uses allowed in the proposed zoning, if the goals and objectives section in our comprehensive plan places importance on promoting and encouraging new business activities. It certainly would be a new business activity that is not offered in the city of DeSoto and this could potentially promote DeSoto as a destination as more and more people actively pursue, uh, to be.
You say this is not offered right now?
Yeah, correct, there is no wedding venue halls that I am aware of, I suppose you could use a VFW or something like that, but, uh...
Well, I mean, the barn, and that's what the barn does and that's what...
Correct, okay.
I mean, not the third, there is not the third...
Yeah, the barn is kind of, it is, but, well...
I'm not saying there's not a need, but I'm just saying...
Yes, the other thing about this one, this is a larger use potentially, you're up to two-hundred-and-fifty, and we'll talk a little bit about the, uh, proposed occupancy and that's how we look at the parking and some of the other issues. So, that's kind of what I was thinking, the barn's limited to a hundred people and they're not, I mean, they promote a lot of uses, but it's not exclusively wedding.
Yeah.
And also the, I mean, Daryl's, you know, is very big on the agricultural farm kind of, uh, education type thing, so I don't... The barn is kind of, in my mind, is, is not dedicated solely for...
Okay.
For weddings and those types of uses. But I appreciate the clarity on that, Richard.
Well, just curious.
As far as utilities go, the, uh, fire service will be added by the applicant to sprinkler the building. They will have a dedicated water line that they'll have to install on their own, uh, with their own funds. It'll come off the, where the, uh, carriage houses are, the city of DeSoto has a water line from there. They'll have to bring that in all the way into the site, uh, we talked about that. Septic system will be provided by an onsite wastewater system and also, that was Steve Chick, the applicant and I, and have talked about the sizing of that and how that's gonna be a pretty specialized system, it's gonna be large. Obviously, they're gonna table quite a few people on short notice. Otherwise, the water is served by a two-inch line that is already feeds to the house that seem to be adequate for the needs for the, for the wedding venue itself as far as potable water. The fire protection is gonna be a completely separate line and will not have any kind of meters or anything like that. The fire needs to be unimpeded by backflow preventers, anything like that, so that is on the applicant to pay for and install that system themselves. As far as parking goes, there'll be no additional ingress or egress points from eighty-third street. We won't allow parking on eighty-third street, so we don't see any additional impacts as far as any activity is concerned. There will be some additional, you know, traffic when the events are starting and ending, but I would say that the road will be able to handle those conditions. And it'll only be for a short time, thirty, forty-five minutes while the event is beginning or, or ending. Environmental impacts, we don't see any kind of impacts as far as noise pollution, air pollution, water, storm runoff. The only additional hard surface area would be some of the handicapped parking areas, sidewalk areas are also gonna put a pavilion or a patio out front. Otherwise, the hard surface improvement will be gravel areas for additional parking.
Brad, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
If this was, uh, I'm a little hazy on this, if this was a supermarket, it'd have a hard surface parking.
Correct.
If this was a bis, some kind of active business, daily traffic and all that, they're, they're able to do gravel because of the agricultural zoning or... I know the other guy did it and the other guy's even, an unnamed other person is even lesser.
Well, ma'am, if you had think back to when we talked about this planning condition, we, it was an item that did come up, that we need to have them pave it with asphalt or concrete. And we decided, especially because we put some limitations on the side, we had to have a five-acre tract, we had to set up some minimum requirements and it really became, and this is sort of their call on whether they want to pave or not. So, we didn't feel like, as far as their customers wanting to come there, they felt like they had that hard surface, they certainly can go somewhere else and have their event. But we just want to make sure that the, uh, they weren't parking in a field or anything like that or just, you know, shortcutting the process. But we didn't feel like, I mean, this is not compatible necessarily to an urban use in the middle of town, whether it's a supermarket or retail store, hardware facility, or even a church or something like that. They would need to have hard surface paved.
So, are zoning regs allow a lesser pavement in this type of?
Yes, that's correct.
That was, that was part of the recent text amendment specifically within the last year.
I remember discussing that.
I vaguely remember, but I'm not... Well, so exhibit B on the staff report shows, outlines what that text amendment is, that this, that's the language of the, of the subdivision, you know, the zoning regs that we're applying.
Okay.
And it does say that, uh, the parking must be on a hard base with compacted gravel. So, I think that's, that's the standard we're applying.
Okay.
Um, and then finally, the text amendment does limit hours of operation from eight AM to midnight. Actually, the applicant put it in their statement, they'd probably be using the facilities approximately from eleven AM to eleven PM, but, um, that certainly can change with, with their use. But we do have the requirements, eight AM to midnight, so, um, don't see any issues as far as noise or anything like that is concerned. Economic impact of the city, once again, it's a new business venture, it's something that could be beneficial for the cities where positives in favor of, right, the SUP. Except which proposed property may or use may detrimentally affect nearby property and once again, these all sort of overlap as we go through them. But because of this use of property is, is once again, it's a tree farm, it's surrounded by trees, it's along with the river, it's primarily to the west, it's farmland, and then you've got Cedar Creek and then the owner actually owns property on the other side. There's, there's a pretty significant buffer all the way around this property, so I don't see any kind of detrimental uses to the residents in the, in that area. And then just moving along as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, utilities plans, facility plans, this fits right in with what we think. The property is zone agriculture, we did go through this text amendment process to make sure that this type of activity would fit within the city of DeSoto and actually far, on the eastern part of town, which is primarily rural residential. Overall, our technical review of the site plan found everything in compliance with our standards and the text amendment. I did want to bring up that we did have some discussion with the applicant about the parking requirement. What is shown is a ratio of three guests to one space, the text amendment says two and a half guests to one space. We did talk about that and decided to bring it to the planning commission with this in mind. They do have a significant area for future parking and overflow, which, well, it's on, it's in your site packet on, on this page too. So, it's something we could require them to increase the few stalls that might be needed for the future overflow a lot, but at this point, it does sort of boil down to the applicant and how they want to interact with their customers. If they feel like at times when they might have a very large venue or very large wedding or reception that...
Related to that, can I ask you a question?
Sure, Richard.
Where's the extent line here, is it the edge of the driveway or is it?
As far as the property?
Well, the, the, the special use permit, how far over?
Well, the special use permit actually takes over this entire, it's actually for the whole piece, but, you know, obviously the activity is gonna occur in this.
So, how, how, I mean, if I'm looking at this right, there's a, there's a line, right?
It's probably, it might be three hundred feet from the edge of, uh...
Oh, long way.
From the, from the edge of the, the pavement, so, I mean, you can, you can tell on your first page, Richard, that it's, uh, but there's, there's, there's a good distance.
There's a lot of room, right, I'm upside down to you, but there's significant room right there that's in the special use permit that's not...
That is correct, that is...
It's got trees on it or something, they...
Yes, it's a tree farm.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, since the trees aren't showing, I'm losing track of where I was.
Anyway, that kind of wraps up the, uh, or my presentation, I'll sit and answer any questions, the applicant and their consultants here to answer any questions.
One, one question I want to ask, back on the times, hours of operation, did you say eleven in the morning, eleven AM?
Well, that's what they suggested in their, um, narrative as part of their application, but our text amendment does say eight AM to midnight is, uh, times of operation.
All right, uh, thank you, Brad, anybody got any questions for Brad, we can come back to Brad.
I have a couple of Brad. Um, the water line has to be put in prior to any events, right, for the fire?
Yes.
Okay, and then the, um, we had talked, um, extensively to other, one couple that came in and talked about the kitchen requirements and the bathroom requirements, are all those, you're all, you cover all of that and all that's meant.
Yeah, well, those are technically part of the site plan, they'll be part of the building package that they turned in to, uh, Steve to review. So, the, clearly what we were looking at is the site plan, the exterior items and then just to make sure that, um, we did talk about the occupancy, because that does affect, you know, parking. But the interior that you've got is, it could change somewhat, Steve might say you need more bathroom space or, you know, kitchen isn't large enough, but that, that's still in the works as far as the actual building plans that they'll turn in and submit for review.
So, that's all.
How big a water line, what's that, Brad?
Talking about a six-inch line that's gonna be, and Justin, maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, I'll be six, I can, I can, I'll go cover that when I get up there, do our presentation.
All right, but it's, it's gonna be a six-inch line.
Okay. And, uh, of course, the height are gonna be placed there.
Why don't you go ahead and, Justin, if you wanna go ahead and answer that, if you've got some of these more technical questions about...
Okay, so, uh, please give me name and address and who you represent.
Uh, my name's Justin Milburn, I'm with Milton-Silvanianary. Uh, my address is three-three-one-three-five, West eighty-third Street, uh, here in DeSoto, Kansas. That's Dustin Keith, he's, uh, one of the co-owners of the Cedar Valley Forests Project. As you all know, uh, to get approval for a special use permit, you gotta through a paracycline. And, uh, I'll just kind of highlight some of the stuff that Brad talked about. On the first page here, uh, up is north on, on this area here, I'm like Brad talked about, the boundary for the special use permit is that blue line. And it's roughly just about fifteen acres is what that one is. The land used on the west side is farming and then farming on the south and small, little bit of residential on the east side here and then vacant ground towards the north. And we've got small sort of residential on the north side. Here's some pictures that we just added to this plant, uh, yesterday. Uh, Dustin went out and took a couple pictures of the property to kind of give you all a look of what it, what it looks like. This here's a barn where the event space is gonna be held, uh, he's trying to keep the same feel and the same look, uh, same color scheme as, as what's out there. So, he's gonna utilize that shell of the building and then, you know, do all the improvements to the inside of the building. Uh, these are just different looks, like this is looking towards the southeast, so more or less, I'm gonna move this on real quick here. So, here's, here's an actual site plan showing this zoomed-in area of where the event space is gonna be held. Uh, north is up on this plan again, so this, this picture here is taken, looking back towards the southeast, towards, uh, the building and similar location. This one here is looking back towards the east, so both of these are looking back towards the building from the west.
So, the existing barn out there?
Yep.
Can you point to that?
Yes, so the existing, uh, buildings on this plan are highlighted in blue.
You can't read that from here, but...
Okay, yeah, 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 let me move this, oh, it's on my plan. Yeah, let me move this a little closer here, but...
We've got a map of it.
Yeah, I got, yeah, we've got a map here.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Well, yeah, so the existing buildings are highlighted in blue.
Okay.
So, this is the main building where the event space is gonna be held.
Yes, the existing, used to have machinery and stuff in it where you go in for hot chocolate and stuff.
Okay, yeah, I'll take the word, but I've never been out there with that building, so yes.
Yeah.
So, that building's roughly a hundred-and-twenty foot wide, it's forty-foot.
Yes.
And that, so it's about forty-eight hundred square foot. Based on our calculations, there's a maximum occupancy of two-hundred-and-fifty-three, uh, people inside the building that we can, that we can have. So, that includes, uh, you know, the customers and then any, uh, staff.
Is that like five square foot a person or something like that or whatever?
That would probably, let's see.
I'd be packing them in there.
Well, yeah, okay, that, that's, that's, I can't, I can't answer that.
Well, that's a, whatever it is, you, somebody figured it out.
Yeah, yeah, we had an architect look at that and that was the number that he came up with, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-three.
Yeah.
So, uh, again, we're gonna utilize the same, uh, building layout, uh, we're gonna have a front entrance on the north side of the building. So, all the patrons will park in this gravel parking lot like Brad was talking about. We'll have a concrete sidewalk on the north side of the building and we'll have four ADA accessible, uh, parking spots on the, uh, north side of the building, just north of the sidewalk, those will be concrete. So, I have a concrete sidewalk for ADA and then concrete sidewalk on the north side and then we'll have a concrete patio area on the west side. People come out and kind of, uh, just hang out and, and so forth. Then they're gonna propose to do some berms on the west side of the, uh, concrete patio area, so we'll put some evergreens and stuff out there to make that real nice. Uh, we've got another parking area, uh, it's a little bit south of the event space. Uh, this one here's, the north parking area is about sixty, about sixty cars, and we've got some overflow parking on the north. It's all grass area, it's pretty flat out there, so if we have overflow, they, they can park out there. Uh, we've got another gravel, like I was mentioning, gravel area just south of the building. Let's see, that's about it on that. Utility wise, there was a question on the water line. We've done some initial looking at that and like Brad had mentioned, we gotta tie into the fire hydrant, there's a data in line over there by the carriage houses. I'm gonna have to extend that down eighty-third and then south to their property, roughly about a half mile of water line. Initial look, six inches is what we're thinking on that one. So, that would be the water line, we're gonna tie it to the west side of the building with that line. Again, that'll just be a dedicated fire line for the, for the sprinkler. Uh, they have existing power lines out there, I believe they've taken this pole down and they're gonna bury, uh, this portion of the, uh, power line to make it look a little better for the, the customers. Uh, Brad did mention, uh, gonna have a septic system, uh, it's located right here, so it's a pretty large footprint, uh, to take the, you know, the waste and everything.
It's along with a creek?
Yeah, right now, we're having it shown right here, uh, just south of, there's a storage building.
It's not in a floodplain, huh?
No, actually, the floodplain, here's this line right here, the floodplain line is roughly seven-eighty-six and the event space is seven-ninety-four, so we're about eight feet above.
Okay, yeah, I, uh, when you said, "I'm gonna put it over here," I'm thinking, man, that's where the creek is, that's, you know, that's a no-no, but if, yeah, if you're above the floodplain.
And actually, this one's gonna be a little, it's, it's called a, I need to look at this, make sure I say it right, a raised drip system, so it's elevated a little bit, so you burm up and then, uh, you build it up and then slope it down.
Or it's a mountain?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, uh...
You said elevated drip system, that sounds like irrigation, but...
It is actually under a pump, it'll go into the septic tank and then it's lifted, pumped up to the top of the berm and then it just flows through the lateral lines.
Okay. So, uh, let me see if there's anything else. I want to say that's about it. I do want to mention that, uh, as a resident of Soto, I really think this would be a good use for this, 'cause I, I, actually, I just got married a month ago and we did tour the barn and it was, wasn't, didn't have the, the space that we needed. So, this would really be a good, uh, a good, uh, use for DeSoto, so, uh, with that, any questions?
Question?
Yeah.
The six-inch water line, is that a city requirement or is that what you guys are...
That's a flow, I mean, we need at least a six-inch line to build, deliver the amount of flow to the building.
That's actually the International Building Code that we, adoption.
All right.
Will you be willing to work with the fire district on, when you lay that out?
By?
Sprinkler system, where you, where you're gonna put your, uh, hose, hydrant hook or your hose hookup?
Oh, uh, actually, we haven't, yeah, we haven't got to those details yet, we just know the size. Once we hopefully get approval on this and we start that design, we haven't really done any work on that just yet, so we're kind of waiting to...
That's part of the building and the permit?
Yeah, yeah, once we get approval, then we'll submit for construction plans, that will include the design of that water line.
And you show a north entrance here, is that the only entrance that you have?
Yep, yep, so the only access point is off of eighty-third.
No, I'm talking about out of the building itself.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh...
You have a north entrance?
Oh, there's a patio on the west side.
Yeah, there's a patio on, yes, the main entrance is gonna be on the north side.
Right.
And then there will be one on the west side?
Yeah, west, west avenues.
The north end, yeah, north and west.
Okay.
Uh, any more questions for a civilian here? Well, it looks pretty reasonable.
Thank you.
So, the, well, one, the final, the entrance drive, there's gonna be a concrete, or asphalt apron, backaways and then gravel from there on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Would the applicant himself like to speak? I can introduce myself, sure. It's it all been said, majority of it has, but, uh, well, come up here.
I didn't get the pleasure of standing up here last time, so I'll do something. My name is Dustin Keith, uh, my uncle is Ron, you'll remember him, my father was Randy, he wasn't here at the last go-round for a very good reason, uh, he's too fidgety to sit here that long, that's my dad. But, uh, I'm a, I'm a DeSoto guy, I grew up here, I graduated class of ninety-nine, um, my grandpa and I actually... My grandpa and I actually, when I was a little guy, dug out of Jack's farm many years ago with tree spade, and actually moved a lot of the pine trees you see around the new high school now, and around the FedEx plant off eighty-third. So I've got a lot of history there, hence why I don't wanna change it that much. I don't wanna, I didn't wanna start over new or anything like that. We wanted to keep what, what I remember it being with my grandpa, and kind of make it what it should be for those others that have had so many memories of my Christmas trees there and so forth, so. I, that's my approach with this, with a, with an open heart and an open mind of, I don't wanna, I guess I kinda feel like I've got somewhat an obligation to keep this what I think it's known for in DeSoto, which I believe is the second oldest Christmas tree farm in the state amongst others. Jack started many years ago, and I've had the opportunity to talk to the Kansas Christmas Tree Growers Association and stuff like that, but.
There really is a Kansas Christmas Tree Growers Association?
There is, there is. Brad, I plan on being a member very soon, so. Yeah, so while, while there, you know, the, the event space allows us to have other options there, as my uncle Ron said, we are, we're tree people, so the idea of being able to utilize what's on the property to enhance the property and keep it Cedar Valley Forest is what we wanna do. There's plenty of awesome canyon fir trees that have gotten too big to sell that we can move and use, and really recycle what we have on the property to keep the feel, again, the same, is just, is my intention in the design. And, and my wife as well, so she, she really loves Colorado, so she sees a lot of this in the design. And if I stray from that design, I will be in trouble. So, but yeah.
So you would, you would do like any other kinda reasonable event, somebody wants to have a group of people and come out and, you know, law-abiding or, or whatever, then it's, it's for rent.
Ideally, yeah. What, what, what you would think in an, an event space could be, you know, for an event? Depends if it was maybe a private function or possibly a wedding, or, you know. Yeah, or a Christmas function for, for that, for that matter, you know, something around the Christmas tree in the holiday season. Anyway, we can kinda, again, continue what, what was done in the past, keep those traditions alive, mix with new, so that we can keep the farm functioning, you know, and keep it, keep it here, keep it what I, I want it to be for this city. Being, being a part, being a resident of DeSoto before I left for a while. I lived here for three years after I graduated from Kansas State, and came back here, lived here for three years, and moved to Tennessee and came back. But yeah, so I've always considered DeSoto as my hometown, and that's kind of where I'm coming from with it.
Okay.
Looks good.
Yeah, it's, anybody got any questions for the applicant?
Kind of, I'm hoping somebody would do the place.
Yeah, we think it's.
I've got memories from, from back in second grade or whatever, 'cause I went to school with you, and so.
Okay.
That place has always been pretty neat to me.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's definitely got a natural beauty to it that I'm hoping everyone can enjoy, not just from here, but spread the word so that more people wanna come here and see the other things, and I think DeSoto has some.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Yes, we will open, we've heard from the applicant and the applicant's civil engineer. We've had staff report. So at this point in time, we'll close the Planning Commission meeting, an open public forum. If there's anybody out there who would like to get up and speak for or against the application in front of us tonight. So hearing that, I will close the public input session, public hearing, and it's back to, back to us. Well, it looks pretty straightforward to me. I say straightforward, this, you know, there's a, it's not, it's not our position to say, whoa, you're gonna have a kitchen, you're gonna have enough bathrooms, you're gonna, I mean, that's, that'll all happen later. We're just looking at events on this piece of ground, and boy, my way of thinking, that's, that's a glove fit. And we brought up some small things, but I don't think there's any, you know, any showstoppers or, or nothing negative. All the, all the findings were positive. Anybody got any other?
Nope. I think it'd be an excellent fit for the property.
So do I.
Yeah, no, I mean, so if that is the case, somebody, if somebody would be interested in making a motion to, I don't remember, if this is an approval, if we approve it or if we recommend it to the council. If you're recommending, we recommend it to the council, yes. So is somebody interested in making a motion to recommend?
I'll do it.
Okay, recommend a wedding reception hall in the RA zoning district?
I have it.
You already have it.
A motion by Commissioner Garrett to recommend approval to the City Council of the Special Use Permit for a wedding reception hall at two-nine-one-four-five West eighty-third Street, and it's for a period of twenty years. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Anybody wanna say anything else before we vote? Can we have a roll call, please?
Schultz?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion carried.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You've got some competition out there, but nobody's gonna have what you got.
No, I hope to work with everybody.
Next order of business is item seven. Item seven. Item seven, I just wanna have staff report, please.
All right, thank you, Chairman.
Bob, we'll get to you.
Chair, before you is a temporary use permit application for outdoor seating at KJ's Pizzeria. You've noticed that the process of building the handicap accessibility, the desire to have the outdoor seating came up. However, when the order went to meet the requirements for the outdoor seating, they had to have an eight-foot wide undefeated handicap accessibility ramp, so the whole thing kinda mushroomed from just having a, fixing the, the step in front of the door for handicapped accessibility to then creating an eight-foot wide path, which then sort of overflowed into having to stand sidewalk on either side, put up railing, all those types of issues that were really designed towards this outdoor seating application. We did get the cart from the horse a little bit on this process, and probably should've been here six months ago with it, but the business wanted to get open, the rehabilitation was underway, and so staff had determined that we would just go ahead and allow for the improvements in front of the building to happen, and then have to come back for the outdoor seating application, to which does go to the Planning Commission. So that's where we are at this moment in time. It's pretty straightforward. I did go out and measure the actual distance, so that we are clear. Slopes do meet ADA compatibility. Some of the items that we looked at, the parking and traffic control, I mean, everything for that location is on-street parking. This outdoor seating won't affect any on-street parking. There'll be no spaces removed. The outdoor cleanup, the restaurants, we usually take care of any issues outside as far as the building or cleanup as far as our customers is concerned. Probably notice they also have some flower boxes. They've done some nice aesthetic things out there as well to help make the area look like a desirable place to be as if you like to sit outside. I have also included just the information in our city code about outdoor seating in the right-of-way for you. Dealer applicant's Rod Valu of KJ's Pizzeria. And he's really interested in having this additional sort of ambiance for his restaurant. This time staff's recommending approval of the temporary use permit for KJ's Pizzeria. Stand for any questions?
Okay, what am I looking at here? What's?
That is actually the applicant's sketch, and we do allow for something, for a minor like this, just hand drawings or.
So you're gonna put bumpers to keep the cars off this?
No, actually, if you, if you've noticed, actually, the, the parking, actually, is there's about a two-foot round incline from the edge of the parking stalls to the metal railing. So if somebody didn't actually pull up too far, they would hit the.
Hit the bumper on the.
Well, they're gonna hit a concrete wall.
Well, okay, there's a, yeah, I was looking at a little, little line there. I'm thinking, well, is that the, all right, you're right. It comes all the way out, so the part, the, the seating is gonna crowd the rail across the front.
Yes.
And so a bumper is right, right below them, a couple feet there.
Correct.
It's high enough the cars, there's no way they're gonna get up to them.
That's why I felt odd when I parked in there, that it rolled, pulled up the park. I'm thinking, yeah, I.
There's a concrete wall that tall.
Yeah.
They're not gonna.
They can park too close.
Yeah, you have to really work to hit that railing. You'd have to, I'm not sure how you, unless you're going really fast.
That'd be a good place for some parking bumpers, you know, but. Okay, so how did, how did the cart get before the horse? It just staff decided that?
Well, I'll explain a little bit. The applicant wanted to do this, and they were ready to open their business, but they didn't wanna have to wait for this. So we went ahead and approved the construction of an eight-foot wide path and the improvements that were necessary on either side to get the slopes for the ADA requirement. So then, but then we, and when they installed the rail and did all those things, but they couldn't use it until they actually came back to the Planning Commission for temporary use permit.
I did a question on the measurements that's on here, though.
Okay.
ADA, we have to have an eight-foot clear path, right?
Yes.
Okay, it's eleven foot, three inches from the building to the rail. So if you take that eight foot away, you've got thirty-nine inches, basically. You've got a thirty-inch table, so if somebody's sitting between the rail and the table, they've got four and a half inches, and then four and a half inches on the other side. Have you still got the clean, clear path?
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, it's just gonna be, there's just, they're basically two-person tables.
Okay, it's gonna be north, it's a west instead of?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
You lay that down, it looks like four.
That's kinda what I was thinking.
But no, it's, it's two people per, per table.
Okay.
You know, facing each other.
I thought I'm sitting on the corners. I've been thinking you'd get sex around one of those, yeah, if your buddy's hungry or not.
Not still be ADA requirements.
Well, no, wouldn't be.
That, that was my question. Still wouldn't be able to do that as long as they're on the east and west side of the table and not north and south. Should be plenty of room.
So I always have trouble with the slope. It used to be one in ten. Changed to one in twelve of late. So these two side slopes are one in twelve?
Yes. Now, I, you know, if you wanna get into the whole technicals, I, they, they should've changed it a little bit, but yeah, it's fine. We've actually had the state ADA office come out and confirm all those things. Property owner for on either side was a little bit disagreeable about the ramp at one point, and so we had the state of Kansas ADA representative come out and take a look at it, so it's, we are good. We're solid with the ADA ramp.
So we're solid with the ADA. We're a little short here and there. We're a little tight, blah, blah, blah. But all in all, it's pretty decent, you know?
I've heard that a few times.
And Richard, I think what the ADA representative is looking for in a case like this is clearly a retrofit.
Yeah.
You know, you've got existing on the east and the west, and what was done there was, was ADA compliant to the maximum extent feasible. That's kind of the, that's the phraseology he used. That's sort of what he looks like in a retrofit. So if you go, there probably are spots on that ramp on the west.
Yeah.
That exceed one to twelve, but he noted those and concluded that it is, it is compliant on a retrofit basis.
Well, it sure is good pizza. The health is friendly. Downtown DeSoto is a better place for this, blah, blah, blah. So any, Ian, give me your take on this.
I think it's a good idea. I think it'll be a nice addition to it. Like you said, the food is good. Their bread is excellent. Nice spring, fall, evening. Have half a dozen or so people sitting out there. I think it's a good idea. I think that eight plus feet is more than enough for all handicap people we have in this town going up and down sidewalk, so.
Yeah, that was my question, you know, with, with the measurements, because I know four people that go by my house daily that are either on scooter or walkers that go through there, and that was my concern, and that was taken care of, so I have no objections. I've been on the thing myself, and looks good to me.
Skateboards allowed?
No. Not encouraged, not encouraged. City ordinance against skateboards downtown.
A temporary use permit?
Uh-oh.
What's the timeframe on it?
It is a maximum of two years. We'll have to bring it to this back here in two.
Two years in jail for skateboarding?
No.
Temporary use permit. Temporary use permit, sorry.
Why are we only going with a temporary, then?
Well, that's the way our, because in the right-of-way, that's the way our regulations read.
Oh, because it's on right-of-way? Okay, all right.
But, yeah, I mean, that seems harsh, but probably the way to do it.
I agree with everything Ian says. Excellent pizza, really nice addition to DeSoto. I have heard nothing but excellent reviews on it, so I'm all in favor of it.
What do you think, Bob?
In favor of, we've eaten there, we've had a good time, we need it.
Yeah, that's one. Well, would anybody, all right, help me on this week. This is a recommendation to.
Actually, kinda.
Is this a permission?
Planning Commission actually makes a motion.
You're the, you're the. Motion to approve. Okay. How about some that, or how about somebody making a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve the temporary use permit for thirty-three oh thirty-one, West one hundred, or West eighty-third for this permit.
We have a motion in a second. We could have a roll call vote.
Garrett?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The motion carried.
Okay, agenda item seven, where are we at? Seven B, final plat for Possum Creek. Brad, have at it.
All right, thank you, Chairman. You know, you've been awful agreeable tonight, so if there's, if there's not even one to turn down, this is the one, right?
No comment.
We actually got a creek in town named that?
We do now.
Okay.
I can let, I can let the applicant discuss how the name was derived for Possum Creek. For you is the final plat for Possum Creek subdivision. We went through public hearing process, as we, the zoning was changed from RA to UDO, which also the Uptown Own Register. It'd be the, it is the first one. It's on the books as far as the UDO in DeSoto. And during that process, we went through a site plan review, which was pretty extensive. It did actually cover a lot of things that are sort of normally in a final plat as far as lot sizes, and indicate where the easements were, things like that. Final plat actually is just the property issues, easements, legal descriptions, things like that. We are going to do another review as we get additional construction information as far as water line, sewer lines, and things like that. At this point, it was pretty straightforward. We went through that process with the preliminary, pardon, the UDO. There isn't a preliminary plat necessarily, but that site plan review takes care of that process in our DeSoto code. All is being said, we recommend approval, or recommend to the City Council for approval of the Possum Creek final plat. Any questions? I will certainly stand for those.
What do you make of, it just aren't numbered, but it's number, Roman numeral three, item chief, fire chief. What do you make? What do you make of him checking no?
Well, that just is not applicable at this point, I don't know that, we used to, actually, maybe this form needs to be updated, we used to have the fire chief sign our final plats, and Mike, maybe you can help us-
Yeah, the form does need updated, um, when we went to the fire district, the building official became the fire, uh, official in the city, so now it's only his signature that's required on the plat. The form is probably, it's probably outdated.
So the X shouldn't miss, the NA should be there, but maybe not the no, or did I miss something?
Well, I guess what we should do is probably eliminate that G and just include, change, move building inspector up to the building official. And maybe put fire.
But there's no conflict there, I guess, that's what I'm-
That's correct.
Okay. Well, it caught my eye, it was the only one in the right column. Do I take that back, go to the last page, our additional comments attached, no? Or any deed restrictions applied for the subdivision?
Joe, maybe you wanna speak to that, we talked about deed restrictions and things like that.
Yep.
And decided you didn't wanna have any at that time, but, um-
I think that if there's gonna be any type of restrictions, it's probably, I would like to maybe have the same type of fence, you know, if they do a fence in the back or something, you know, maybe we need to do something in regards to having all the fences be the same, um, something like that, but nothing, I don't think there's gonna be anything real big, just, you know, unless you guys can think of something.
Would you mind approaching the-
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna, can I switch for a second?
Sure.
From staff to the applicant and state their name and address?
My name's Joe Roy, one seven one two three, one hundred and fifty-eighth Baysor, Kansas.
Okay, could, uh, Mr. Roy, could you explain, um, restriction, I mean, a lot, a lot of times, plan developments have, you know, fencing setback, blah, 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 a little bit different than the rest of the community, and so you may have some of those.
There, all the setbacks that is, I'm gonna hit all the setbacks.
The city, current city-
The city, yes, I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna, all those are gonna be the same, I'm not changing any of that.
Okay.
The only thing that possibly is that, the only thing I could think of is the fences, I wouldn't wanna have fifteen different fences, like chain link, wood, all that. I think if anything, there might be one, you know, something on that, unless you guys would have something that you would like to see, you know? But fences is, you know, basically the only thing I was thinking that could be kind of a hodgepodge, you know? I'd rather have just one type, and maybe I, maybe that's the only thing that I would probably-
Yeah, I mean, that'd be a good one, I, I mean, I would think, because, man, there's nothing, nothing worse than, where do you put the fans? You put it a foot on his property, oh, I made a mistake, put it a foot on my property, and it's that wood that I gotta tear down in ten year, or, you know? So, yeah, wait, lots of luck on picking what type, I mean, that's-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it would probably be a wooden type of fence of some type, you know, a picket fence, you know? I'm trying to keep the theme, old town, you know, with the, um, the alley system and all that, trying to keep new houses right in the middle of town, but they look and they fit in, that's my whole plan.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my whole plan, is trying to keep it along-
Well, you know, once the deed restrictions, that's the first thing that came to my mind, old town, look, you're gonna make everybody have a front porch, you're gonna make everybody do that, you're gonna have, you are.
Yeah, it's all on the, um, I don't know, I don't think you were here, but I-
I was not here that night, so I'm sorry for-
Yeah, there's three different, there's three different plans.
Yeah.
Okay, of the houses that I'm planning on doing, there's gonna probably be a fourth one to accommodate a couple of lots, but basically, they're all gonna have the big front porch on, on them, um, and they're all gonna have a detached garage in the back. And, like I said, it's just gonna be, and they're all gonna be colored, you know, it's gonna have rock on them all, it's gonna have, the color scheme's gonna be all, you know, where it all ties in.
Great, okay, well, I'm, I'm a little out of term here, so what we're looking at tonight is, the only change would be, or the only, you have a no out here in the column, and it might be a deed restriction on a fence, and that's-
That would be it.
That's the only new-
Yeah, unless you guys could think of something that you'd like to see, I mean, we kinda addressed the parking situation, you know, 'cause I've got off-street parking behind everything, 'cause Bob was curious, he didn't really, you know, wanna try to park, even though it's allowable, I'm trying to not do that, 'cause I'm gonna give them plenty of parking behind, so, um, and that was one of the things that we, we talked about, um, was the, was the cars.
And all the houses are gonna face this, the alley street, this alleyway?
The one, when the alley comes through, they're gonna be, the houses are gonna face Ottawa Street, okay, on that side, on the east side of the alley, they're all gonna face Peoria Street. A lot of things that throws you off here is the city owns that ditch that goes down through there, you know, that big ravine through there, the city owns that.
You mean Possum Creek?
Everybody, everybody is cur, didn't want the possum, so I didn't even wanna bring it up till you did, so, but anyway, they will face into the, into those trees, basically, so you're gonna come in, that's the ones that I said that I would put, I have to bring another plan, because those houses there, the garage will actually be attached to the house, because when you come in the garage, I'm gonna fix up the front of the back, I should say, gonna fix the back up to where it looks decent, and then when you're gonna come in the garage, then you're gonna go into the main floor, and then you should go out the front of the house, and it'll have a big deck on the front that'll overlook all those trees that's down there. And then downstairs, you'll have, I'll have a patio out there, 'cause there's bedrooms in the basement, so that would walk out-
Basically, the lots are either gonna face Peoria Street or Ottawa Street.
That is correct, that is correct.
So going down the alley, the, that'll be basically the backs of the houses?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
That's the right side for the alley to be on, you know?
Just like my house, yeah. It's kinda tricky, though, 'cause, you know, if you go out there today and you look from Ottawa, or from Peoria looking west, you're never gonna see those houses until fall, the leaves are done, then all of a sudden, you're gonna see houses out there, 'cause that's actually the front of the house that's gonna be overlooking, somebody's gonna love that, where you got deer, and you got fox, and you got all that stuff right in your front yard. Possums, yeah.
We've got, we've got a few alleys around, houses facing on them, kinda over that way, so-
Yeah.
Will anybody have any questions for the applicant? Well, then, anything additional you'd like to-
I don't think so.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. Uh, let me collect myself here for a second, we're looking at item seven B, and this is the application and checklist for the final plat. And these are the final plat drawings, and Brad, correct me, these have, have these gone to Johnson County?
No, they won't until after the council approves, and then we have to get all the signatures before we can go to the county.
So somebody's gonna go in here and check coordinates and bearing, or, you know, blah, blah, blah?
Somebody, Mike gets to do that.
Mike, Michael, do that.
Yeah, I do, I do a very thorough review of all the coordinates and blah, 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 all of this class.
Hold up, does the property lines all flows, okay, somebody's gonna do that, but, yeah, I think county will be the thorn in everybody's side.
Yeah, so, I mean, in general, you do rely on the professional surveyor to do the technical work, but what we'd be interested in is making sure that this plat and the lot dimensions and the boundaries and the easements are consistent with the UDO we've already approved, that's thing number one. And then, yeah, then the technical, uh, the math on the thing, um, you know, the, the county surveyor does a very thorough review of that, the surveyor who prepared it is, it's his professional obligation to make sure that those things are correct, so, um-
I paid him fifteen thousand dollars to do that, so it ought to be right.
Yeah.
It ought to be right, okay, so what, so just everybody, we are approving this, based on staff's recommendation, that this is accurate, this is gonna go to the county, and they're gonna, uh, it'll run, they'll pass it under their nose, and if there's a flaw in it, they'll find it, but-
Yeah.
It's beyond me to tell you this, something's wrong here, beyond our jurisdiction. So would anybody like to make a motion for approval, or, uh, this, well, we can't really, we can, we're making a motion that this is acceptable.
Yeah, you actually, plat's a little different, you actually approve the plat, but then it does go forward to the city council, because they have to accept the dedication of easements and rights of way, so their review of it isn't really for a, um, kind of a look at the lot arrangement and stuff, but they do have to, on behalf of the, of the public, accept those easements.
'Cause I remember once, this little site trip, I first got on the planning commission, and I had voted against project. It came back in this form, and I voted against it again, and I was reminded that, well, no, you can't, all you're voting on is, is this accurate? Not, not that this is a allowable use, but is this accurate, so that's what we're voting on, is this an accurate deflection of what was presented to you the first time? I wasn't in on the first presentation, but I feel like, uh, like I can vote on this. So is there anybody out there who'd like to make a motion to approve?
I will make the motion that we approve the final plat for Possum Creek.
I'll second it. We have a motion in a second, if we could have a roll call.
Garrett?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Napol?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Roy. Yeah, okay.
I've been called worse.
I keep, I keep looking at that I in the end, I'm trying-
Spilt it all my life and will continue.
Oh, guess what? Old business. Updated the comprehensive plan, we have a, a Mr. Todd Strayer here.
Yeah, I think it's Todd Strayer, actually, we, uh, as Richard, you were calling, went through this election process in November, December, and interviewed Todd, and I felt that his firm as abilities were certainly a good fit for DeSoto, and engaged him in a contract, and he's been working probably since February, went some data gathering, interviewing key stakeholders, spent a lot of time here in DeSoto. Also, had a couple with public hearings, things like that, and then also, uh, go through the, uh, survey information, which I was real happy with the, uh, my response from God, so, at this point, I'll turn it over to Todd, let him kinda go through the review, let him introduce himself and, uh, give us an overview of where we're at in the process. Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Brad. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you finally, and, uh, the, the full planning commission. As Brad said, I've been meeting with, um, city staff for, I guess, three or four months, um, just getting the field for DeSoto and, um, gathering data. What I wanted to do is, um, obviously, we're updating the city's two thousand and seven comprehensive plan, and so I wanted to obtain, um, that plan and all the other exhibits that went along with it, as well as the city's, uh, twenty seventeen strategic plan that you guys might be aware of, and that's more of a policy document, but the idea was to really intertwine, sort of weave those efforts into this present effort to update the city's land use plan. And as Brad mentioned, to date, um, in addition, in addition to meeting with staff, um, I've, I've met face to face with eight stakeholders, so these are individuals that the mayor, or Brad, or Mike has pointed out, that would kinda help me gain a better understanding of DeSoto, and, uh, these individuals can provide, you know, a little bit of, uh, their background. Uh, Joe actually was one of the stakeholders that I interviewed, and he gave me, um, a preliminary look at, uh, the Possum Creek subdivision, and I was very impressed, I liked it, new urbanist, and anyway, I've met with those folks, and the idea was to get, you know, just a face to face, uh, kind of a citizens, or a business owner, or contractors' point of view of DeSoto. So we did those, we've also had two workshops, um, Richard went to both of them. Attendance was a bit lacking, it was a beautiful day, and, um, for whatever reason, we didn't get the numbers we wanted, so we, um, you know, we, we charted ahead, and I had, had been developing a citizen survey that, um, at first, I didn't know if the city was gonna use or not, but sure enough, Mike and Brad brilliantly put it together and put it on the Facebook and on the interwebs.
Brilliantly?
And, uh, somehow, we got two hundred and fifteen response, so, after, after getting some lackluster attendance at the two workshops, boy, I was really happy to see that, that level of participation. This is what I do, comprehensive plans, I've, I've done several of them, and I take an approach which I have sort of, um, I call values-driven approach, so it's really the values of the residents of my client communities and their perspectives, there's, their, their opinions that really shape the plan, so public engagement is a really important, uh, part of this process, in fact, it helps guide the, the recommendations and, uh, the policies that I recommend for the plan, so, um, not having that initial participation was a concern, so I was really happy to see the survey, and of course, I'll continue meeting with you all in, in, informal sessions like this, and I wanna say informal, I'm not looking for a vote tonight, or a recommendation of any sort, it's more of a, an exchange of information. Um, these, these sessions are more of an opportunity for me to weigh in and review some of the submittals, or some of the, uh, the work products that, that, that we've been working on, and so that's what tonight is really about, introduce, in addition to introducing myself, uh, the comprehensive planning process and the plan deliverables itself, is just to, you know, kinda open the dialogue, so that, uh, when, when we send you draft documents, you feel free to, um, you know, contact me directly, or contact city staff, and, or, or forward us, uh, your recommendations, or any, any, any questions, or recommended changes you might have. And so that's why I wanted to get you the preliminary draft of chapter one early, and, uh, at this meeting, I'd like to also sort of call to your attention the survey results, I assume you were, you received both of those items in your packets, is that right? So I guess, um, you know, starting with the, um, with the chapter one, um, if you look at the table of contents, which again, has been updated, and will continue to be updated since that packet, but it basically gives a, what I like to say, a, a, a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of, of DeSoto, starting with, you know, the, the fundament, the legal enablization of a comprehensive plan, which includes the purpose and intent to provide the abstract, and the abstract of the comprehensive plan, that basically lays, lays out how the comprehensive plan will come together, and then I go into, uh, what I call the stages of occupancy, and that traces the, uh, the history of DeSoto, and if you've read that, you'll have a better understanding where Possum, the name Possum came from. John Possum, of course, was a Shawnee, and one of the early settlers, um, of DeSoto, and back in eighteen fifty-eight, I believe that property that, uh, Joe Roy is, is subdividing, was included in one of the first land transactions in DeSoto. So, um, that is a historic name, it has nothing to do with the animal, but more or less, uh, Shawnee, um, one of our, one of our forefathers. And I like to, you know, again, I use, I, I, I'm updating your oh-seven plan, so I did steal some of the, uh, historical accounts that were included in that document, but Brad also gave me another, uh, a few other historical resources that I've included, and again, tried to weave, you know, weave together in one, hopefully cohesive snapshot of the history of DeSoto, and a brief history of Johnson County. So, again, it'd be nice to, uh, you know, if you have any feedback or any corrections, please let me know, um, I think the, uh, where we come from is important, as, um, even in, in Joe's plat that you just looked at, some of the design, some of the subdivision layouts, some of the names of the subdivisions could hark back to where we came from, and I'm hoping future generations, if they pick this plan up, they'll get a, a colorful view of the rich history that DeSoto offers. Moving on from the, uh, the, the history, um, is a socio, socioeconomic summary, uh, which kinda looks at national, regional, and local trends, and population, and socioeconomic characteristics, kinda shows the, the population changes of DeSoto, which, um, increased about ninety-four percent from nineteen ninety to two thousand, that most likely had to do with some annexations, I would say fairly aggressive annexations, um, and then it stabilized from two thousand to two ten, twenty-ten, um, but, but still robust growth, twenty-five percent growth, and from twenty-ten- And from 2010 to 2017, it's estimated that DeSoto's growing just under 7%. So, basically, from 2000 to present, DeSoto is mirroring Johnson County's growth. So, it's stabilizing, I think. And then, the, the socioeconomic summary goes into greater detail, which I won't go into tonight, but that detail helps us as land planners, and city officials, as policy, you know, architects, to get a better understanding of the citizenry that we serve. For example, the, the population of DeSoto has 6% more females than, than males, so it's, it's fairly female-dominated. It also has a very high percentage of individuals under five, young children. It also has a high percentage of young adults, age 20 to 24, and a high percentage of baby, or Gen Xers, which I think the Brad, I, and Mike may consider ourselves, anyway, age 45, all the way up to 74. On the other side, DeSoto has a very low percentage of children age 5 to 9, as well as, I guess, young adults age 25 to 34, and it also has a very low percentage of, of seniors, age 65 on up. So, again, the demographic summary, or, i- i- is really intended to just give us a snapshot of what the population of DeSoto looks like. It'll help us determine what housing would be most supported by the community, and also some of the other social services that might be needed. The socioeconomic summary also found, to no surprise, that compared to the peer cities, I failed to mention that, that part of this, the demographic summary, was to look at DeSoto, and look at how it compares with peer cities. And we've identified Udora, Bonner Springs, and Spring Hill as some comparable cities that would help benchmark us, as well as, I included Johnson County, State of Kansas, and national trends. So, as you'll see in that demographic summary, I've got several tables that compare the, the latest demographic findings against those peer, peer cities, the county, state, and national trends. But anyway, you know, DeSoto, again, has a high percentage of Hispanics, 12% to be exact, which is well above all the peer communities surveyed. Alternatively, it also shows that the income levels are fairly consistent, pretty average, no city is really standing out. Johnson County, of course, has some very high incomes, but one thing that does stand out is, DeSoto leads all the peer cities, the county, and the state, in the percentage of those individuals living below the poverty rate. So, anyway, that's something that the city, you know, needs to consider as we move forward with social services and so forth. Interestingly, the, DeSoto had the highest percentage of individuals living alone. Also had the high, to no surprise, with the high percentage of females, it also had the highest female head of households, with no husband present. Conversely, it also had the lowest percentage of married couples in a household, and also had the lowest average person per household. And of course, it had the lowest percentage of seniors than the peer cities. Had the highest pers-
Yeah, just curious, that, boy, that just seems odd to me, that we're, we are a low, low percentage of seniors in this community.
Yeah.
Man, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't seem right, I mean, that seems, you know, it just seems contrary, but, but, I mean, your numbers are from Census Bureau?
Yeah, the latest ACS. Yeah, I mean, if you look at Table 1.06, you know, it shows persons 65 and older. I'm on page 17, I don't know if they've all corresponded, but DeSoto had 7.8% of the population was 65 and older. Which is, you know, it's low. I mean, you look at the, the national average is 15.2, the state average is 15, you know, that's almost half. So, you know, Udora is closest with 9.2.
Then you also said we had a high percentage of, was it people in their twenties, or so?
Yeah, 20, well, like, 20 to 59, actually. If you look on page 16, you look at that middle paragraph, it says, compared to the peer cities, DeSoto had the highest percentage of persons under five, age 20 to 24, and basically age 45 to 64. So, it's in that, there's a lot of peo-, lot of folks 64 and younger, but once you hit that 65 and older, you know, I think that's, I think that's where it's getting, you know, the, the seniors. So, a lot of folks, you know, between, up to 64, but then, once you get over that, I think that's where you're, you know, you're not losing population, but other cities tend to have more. Is there assisted living facilities here in town?
That's what's my question. What do you attribute it to? Is it the living situation, there's not as much?
We just have the one assisted living, and I can't imagine, there's maybe 100 beds there at the most.
You don't have public transportation either, so you've got to have a car, and your schools, if you look at the surveys, it'll be exciting to get into that, this, folks are moving here for the schools. So, seniors, they, they kind of get taxed out, you know, that's, that's not a desirable environment for, for a senior, because they typically don't have kids, and they're going to, they have to pay the tax for the public schools. But I could look into it. I'll, I'll look at the numbers and make sure that it's consistent, because it's, it's something that, that we want to make sure that, that DeSoto is open to, you know, seniors, and it's a good place to retire.
I mean, here, here's a, for example, like, building the apartments, because young folk don't have a place to live, therefore, they don't live here, and you're telling us they're already here, but they're not, obviously, in those apartments, or, you know what I'm, you know what I'm trying to get at?
Well, interestingly, when we get into the future land use plan, what, what I'll, what you'll find, is the latest marketing studies are finding that the, the millennials, who have now surpassed the boomers in, in sheer numbers and size, they're demanding very similar homes as, as the, as the baby boomers. So, you're starting to see this huge markets, and they're, they're crossing. They both want access to culture, services, retail, walkability, that's exactly what the seniors want. So, that's why it's important to point this out, because while we're somehow attracting those millennials, so, you know, the housing that attracts them should also be attracting the boomers and, and folks that are even older.
No, when you go into, over on Article Lethal in NEXA, it seems like everything that's new construction, it's either duplexes, or apartments, or, you don't really see, and of course, there's limited land availability in, in the towns, but it seems like everything is-
Well, look at 87, going into Lenexa. That's exactly, it's apartments, shops, the aquatic center's going in there, I'm not surprised there's movie theaters, and everything is in one spot.
Yeah, walking distance.
This, it's like a bedroom community, too, you know? As we get in the survey, it'll unravel some of the stuff, but, you know, schools by far the number one strength, not really good places to go out to eat, and be entertained, go out to the theater, you don't have that. So, you're missing some of those amenities that, that might be attractive to a, to a senior. Now, the seniors that I've met with that live here love it, you know, they go to the parks, Miller Park, and they love it, so quality of life is there. It's just, these are just numbers. They're, they're, they're not qualifiable, they're, they're just quantifiable numbers, and they're benchmarked against some peer cities. So, I wouldn't take alarm. I think you, you could take away from these numbers, a recommendation that, hey, perhaps the city needs to consider more housing for seniors, or, you know, what amenities are we missing? And, and again, I think the survey gets into that. But you'll find out, you know, one of the questions is, does the city have adequate, you know, park and recu-, or parks and activities, or recreation for seniors, I believe, it's, you know, slightly better than 50/50, might have been 60/40. So, it's not like we're lacking. Rather, I would look at, hey, we're doing something good. What, what's DeSoto doing to attract young families? Or, you know, single head of households, females that don't have a husband present, they've got kids, they're coming here. Why? Because we have excellent schools, and I think we have an affordable housing stock.
One thing also, the senior, even what you just talked about, we don't have a lot of maintenance provided housing, and that's kind of something that's sort of missing. You know, the ones that Don Par developed up at 90th Circle, I guess, and those things filled up like wildfire and-
Interestingly, it's, it's not just seniors, it's, it's, they're, they're attracted, I mean, I'm sure there's a list of, probably a waiting list of seniors that would love to get in there, but it's market-driven. I've talked to some young folks that live in there, so.
You know, it could just be our perception, we're all getting older, and we tend to deal with people about our age, so we see them, and we kind of glance over the hundreds, or whatever, the rest of them. You know, they come in, they leave, they want to go to work, they come back at night, they're in their house, so, you know, that could have something to do with it, too.
That's, that's for sure. I think that's, and, and those older folks just tend to be more engaged cynically, you know, and stuff that goes on at City Hall, so I have that bias, too. I was surprised to see that I had the same reaction, that really are, you know, elderly population is really low, that's, that was surprising to me.
Contrary to national trends. It also kind of gets watered down from, by the other age cohorts that are really thriving here, you know?
Is that something we can focus on, is getting more senior housing here, maybe? Is that something we want, would want to advertise for, and try to get more?
I don't think you prohibit necessarily, in fact-
No, we encourage it.
Car at Don has a whole platted development that could easily go 55 and older, or, you know, they, now, now, how they do that is outside the city's really jurisdiction. Yeah, we, we can't really limit, oh, you know, but the market could, so they do that.
Yeah, we can, we can do, you know, include things in the strategic plan that say encourage, or foster, or reach out to those sorts of developments.
More ADA compliant houses.
And that will come, so right now, we're looking at sort of existing conditions, kind of like discovery, if you're, you know, looking at lot cases, we're just looking at the facts. Once we get into recommendations, we can see, okay, now, is this a problem? You know, or perhaps we would like to see, you know, a more diversified population that has, that's more, we want to be a more welcome community for, for seniors. Where they comes, silver sneakers.
So, to know how to stock the pond.
Yeah, there you go.
To put it in fish terms.
You know, you know what they call it? What's the perfect, you know, so many catfish, so many blah blah blah, bluegill, bass, whatever, I mean, how? It's called li-, a, a more artful way of putting it is, it's, it's called lifecycle housing. So, moving up in years doesn't mean moving out. You know, so, you know, that's, that's really what planners want to do, is have, you know, you talk about sustainability, or stocking the pond, you know, you want to be able to, to, you know, age in place. So, we'll start, two things. One, I'll, you know, since this is something that stands out as a unique characteristic of DeSoto, I'll make sure the numbers are consistent. You know, sometimes, when you look at the ACS, which is American Community Survey, that's a survey they do between the decennial, you know, tenure surveys. You know, because we're at 2018, I mean, the 2010 data, it's like, you know, sometimes, you know, it's outdated, but maybe sometimes when you're doing these, you know, these last three years, sometimes there could be a wrinkle or some error. So, I'll make sure that it's not a statistical error, and make sure it's a, a real trend that we should look into, and report back. Didn't want to spend too much time on there, but another one that stuck out to me was the percentage of rentals. You've got a very high 40.3% rentals, which I thought was, was quite high. And again, high as, you know, relative to the peer, peer communities and so forth, you know?
Well, I did think about that, though, is we got some large chunk, I mean, Lakeview Heights and-
Concentrations, yeah.
Very concentrated rental areas, so they're, so when you go to the RH district of DeSoto, those, I mean, that type, when you apply it across the board, it looks like, wow, rentals are through the roof. And there are certainly some rentals in, in older DeSoto, but I think those two sort of developments might skew things a little.
Are there 250, Clearview City, 250?
230, 200, 200.
Is that, is that right?
I delivered 221.
Some of them may not be suitable for occupant.
No, I thought that was rented units.
Rented. But Brad, there's these concentrations. You know, if, if you drive, and Brad has, you drive me to East DeSoto, you would think, you know, that's where, that's, that's how I, that's where you get the 195,000, 192,700 average home value. Your average home value is, you know, just below Johnson County, well above all the peer communities. So, that kind of gives you an idea, there's some really nice estates in town, to, to be able to balance the average, you know, average home value to-
There's a fair amount of mobile homes and things like that, which are typically rentals, so.
But I think they're all, I mean, it's the average home value.
Yeah, you're right. But that's absolutely right. DeSoto's got a lot of, was that a lot? There's a lot of estate-type-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
-properties that are worth a lot, and then we've got some pretty low-end stuff, too.
Which, which again, I think brings back to that diversity. You know, we've got, we've got such a diversity of, you know, we have, we've got a concentration of affordable housing, but we also have, the majority of our housing stock is, is newer, well-built, estate-style homes, that boost our average home values close to Johnson County averages. It, what I like to do, when I write these plans, I like it to be kind of a marketing tool. Now, again, we get to see everything, you know, but there's certain components that we can, we can pull out of here, and put on the website, and broadcast to, you know, prospective business, prospective developers, or families wanting to move here, and show them, hey, we've got a very dynamic, you know, housing stock, population base, you know, we're Hispanic-friendly, we've got, you know, we're, we're a strong population of single females living alone, you know, and, and, and just a, a very diverse community. So, something for everyone, and it's pretty value-driven, too. If you look at the Table 1.10, it kind of goes through the average monthly costs on homes, and again, the average monthly, you know, homeowner cost is high. It's, it's the highest among all peer communities, and the county, the state, and the nation. And I think, as Brad mentioned, that may have something to do with the fact that you have these estate-style homes that are on, you know, lots of land. It may also mean that some of our homes are old, you know, it's a historic town. But then you look at our average monthly rent, again, we've got a good percentage of affordable homes, a, a high percentage of renters, renters, and we've got the lowest average monthly rent. Perhaps that's why we have a high percentage of rentals. All, all, all while, a fairly low vacant housing rate, which shows that demand's there. Our, our vacant housing rate is 8.8, which I think, you know, you look at national averages is 12.2. Kansas is about 11% rental, uh, vacancy rate. The counties, only 5%, but that makes sense. Spring Hill, I don't know if this is a good comparison, but Brink, Spring Hill somehow has a, just a 3.5% vacancy rate. I was, that's surprisingly low. But I've never been to Spring Hill, so I don't know, I don't know what their housing makeup is.
Pretty agrar, I think. I mean, I've just been kind of around the, I've never been into the town, even, but if there is a town.
Can't be down there for long, damn. Yeah.
So, anyways, you have some time to go through this. It goes on and talks about the cost of living index, which kind of weighs, you know, your general, general spending habits against what it would cost in some of the peer cities, and in the State of Kansas, and across the United States. Overall, things in DeSoto are about 5% lower than the national averages. Where we, where we fail, or not fail, but where we are a little bit more expensive, which may, maybe a surprise, is groceries. Now, if the new grocery store, I would imagine that would go down, but I, I was told that with that, having one grocery store, the prices were a little bit higher, and that could be why groceries are a little bit more expensive, and actually, not only DeSoto, Udora, Bonner Springs, and Spring Hill, the groceries were all 101, which is 1% above the national average, which I can make up a reason for DeSoto, I, I can't make up a reason for the other communities.
Well, I can, Udora and Spring Hill also only have one-
Is that right?
-grocery store, and, you know, like, a Dollar General, I don't, I mean, Bonner Springs certainly has a Walmart and a Price Chopper, but, so, that one surprises me a little, but I can see Udora and Spring Hill being pretty consistent with-
You notice some dynamics going, I mean, just here's a small-
You notice some dynamics going on. I mean, just here's a small side trip. I go in to buy distilled water at Dollar General, it's a buck. I go into Harps, it's a dollar seventy-two. They don't carry, they don't carry distilled water. They do now? Well, so I go back into Harps, ninety-two cents. It's like, three weeks later, I was over there, I mean, it's, the prices seem to like... I tried for a year to get them to carry distilled water.
Harps?
Harps.
They got it?
I guess your tap water's not good enough.
You guys are on the CPAPs, aren't you? You know, we created a wing at Deer Camp for the CPAP guys.
It makes my bourbon taste better.
No, it's not bad.
Take ice cubes out of this, no, so...
And that's a problem, you don't have that competition, you know?
Well, either they're trying to put Dollar General out of business, or, and things are looking ratty over there, or, or, or what? It's just a continual, I don't know, but...
I bet they've got guys going, they probably have shadow shoppers. They know, they know each other's price.
I wonder when those apartments get filled up, if that's going to help them lower their prices.
Have they started leasing yet?
I think they're getting ready to do that.
Because I wouldn't mind doing a tour. Yeah, I hear they're very, very nice, but I, I, I don't know if they're marketing, pardon me?
Hopefully, they stay that way.
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know if, um, I always said, the factory across the street where they do the...
Udamaki.
What's it called?
Udamaki.
Udamaki? I think they were, they're hoping a lot of the Udamaki employees would move from Kansas City, but I have a film, we're, it's, I think a lot of people just want to live here. I wouldn't be surprised if folks move there, commute to Kansas City, Lawrence, wherever. Maybe they'll get some, but, yeah.
When you look for some of the rentals that we have in DeSoto that are going to be about the same price, if I had the choice between the two of them, I'd head to the apartments.
Yeah. Yeah, they've got pools. It looks very nice, very, very green. And of course, those, those units aren't included in any of these numbers, which I think would, again, between Parr and Joe, they're, I mean, the housing stock's growing.
So, those numbers aren't included in this?
Of course not, no, no.
Because they're not ready?
They're not ready, and this, I mean, it, I think it's twenty seventeen numbers, but even those are probably more tw- more twenty sixteen.
Okay.
So, all the plats that you've approved the last couple of years, it probably doesn't know those lots.
Okay.
It's actually units that have been surveyed.
Okay.
Not legally plotted.
Right.
So, anyway, I didn't want to spend too much time, so we go into, you know, then now we start trying to put a profile together of our workforce. We look at educational attainment, you know, whether they have advanced degrees, that, you know, and then occupational characteristics. US Census data tells us what type of occupation our workforce has. Again, predominantly, uh, the DeSoto, um, you know, workforce is in management, business services, education, and arts occupation, which is a fairly general, you know, general category, but it, it parallels the workforce characteristics of Johnson County pretty closely. And then, um, actually, the industry that these individuals are employed in are led by the educational services and healthcare and social assistance, which is, comes by no surprise, I would think. And I think then we go into occupation and commuting, and again, the only thing that really stuck out to me was, you know, you have no, no public transportation, but either does Johnson County. A lot of talk of it lately. We, of course, get all kinds of whispers in St. Louis about all this public transportation is supposed to come to connect the city, but it's very expensive, and believe me, we have it. We've, I've invested, or I've paid for the infrastructure through my taxes, and it's not exactly working. It's, um, the MetroLink is, I bet I've ridden it three or four times just to go to the baseball game, just for my own amusement. I've never, I don't use it, nor do I know anyone who uses it for commuting to work. So, you've got a lot of folks that drive alone to work. You've got a slightly, um, longer commute time than the county or national average, you know, twenty-seven minutes, but I think most folks that you talk to in DeSoto would say it's worth every, every minute to live on the three acres or to enjoy the small-town atmosphere. I thought, I was surprised to see a low percentage of folks working from home or self-employed, too. Go ahead.
Question, you got down to your public transportation zero.
Yeah.
Does Johnson County not still run their bus service from the county into Kansas City?
If they do, no one, no one mentioned that they were using it for workforce. Is that just for seniors?
I used to work for the county, and they were directly across the street, and I originally worked for the original Myers Brothers that ran the service.
Right.
But I left the county ten years ago, and they were running it then, but I haven't heard anything since.
Now, it does say in the census, because I looked into that, tax, it doesn't, like Uber and taxis, that's not included, but that bus shuttle should be. That's public.
Mike, do they still come here?
They don't come here. God.
No, but Joe used to.
Between Johnson County Community College and Lawrence and...
The county bus system still operates.
It says point four percent of...
That's county, though. Nothing in DeSoto.
Yeah, no, there's no stops there. There's, there's, there's no public engagement here.
Okay, all right, all right. I was looking at the DeSoto. I should have been looking at the Johnson County.
Yeah, Johnson County, point four percent. That's what that investment's getting you. Is there a car, there's not a carpool lot either, is there? I guess it's a small town.
No, there's nothing.
Does it sit, yeah, okay. All right. Um, there's something else that I, I provided, Brad, that I'll get to you guys once you have a chance to go through this, but it's kind of a fun thing, that Esri, that's a, that's a company that provides all the GIS software that I use, but they've also bought into this community tapestry, uh, database, which looks at the fabric of the United States community. And it breaks it up into little segments, lifestyle segments, and it categorizes them based on your spending habits and lifestyles and so forth. It tells you what kind of magazines you subscribe to, what kind of, you know, whether you do your own maintenance on your car or take it out. It really gets down to the nitty-gritty. It provides an interesting snapshot on what a typical DeSodian might look like, or not look like, but their spending habits. I provided that to Brad, and you'll have it in your next, uh, next packet. It's called the Community Tapestry. I don't know, I just gave it to Brad today, so I don't expect him to have much input on it.
Yeah, he might get so, whoa, really?
So, so you guys...
I had attachment on your email.
So, fifty-nine percent of your population falls, falls into the Green Acres category. Okay, so, tell me if this...
What's that guy's name? Eddie Murne or...
Eddie R.
Eddie R.
Okay, well, we have...
Eddie Murphy's not anywhere.
Tell me, tell me if this doesn't describe Richard and some of your friends and neighbors. Okay, uh, median age of forty-three, median household income, that doesn't matter, okay. The Green Acres lifestyle centers on country living and self-reliance. They are avid do-it-yourselfers who maintain and remodel their homes with all the, with all the necessary power tools to accomplish the jobs. Gardening, especially growing vegetables, is also a priority. Again, with the right tools, tillers, tractors, and riding lawn mowers. Outdoor living also features a variety of sports, hunting and fishing, motorcycling, hiking, camping, and even golf. Self-described conservatives, residents of Green Acres remain optimistic about the future and are heavily invested in it. So, anyway, it goes on. I didn't make, this is taken from their, you know, the tapestry language, but from what I, I mean, it, it's, it's fairly general, but at the same time, I think you could, that would describe DeSoto a little bit. And it goes in to break it down by your neighborhoods, socioeconomic traits, your market profile, um, family landscape. Middleburg is the second-most populous lifestyle, and, and I'll include that. If anything, it just kind of helps site selectors or folks that want to maybe bring a business here. Gives us an idea of what type of things you all buy and what kind of stuff you're interested in. Are you a Sears town, or Nordstrom's town, or a Royal King, or...
Red Bull, Garcia, or Fenley?
There you go. Fenley, yeah. You know what? I think, I think arguably both. You, you got the Sage, the Elite Fly-Tying Shops, and then you're going to have to have the grand, well, it used to be called Grandpa Pigeons. What else? Like the bait shop, just a bait shop, too. You got them both. Did you all have a chance to look at the survey results? Let me just, here's what I gleaned, most of which I just kind of found in the last couple of days, but issues facing DeSoto. Number one, downtown revitalization. And how about that? We got outdoor seating, had to do a special use permit for outdoor seating. You know, I mean, that's something that we might want to think about. It's like, why can't we encourage that and, and let it happen by right? Number two, economic development. You know, there's concerns, you know, what can the city do in the next ten to twenty years to, to get good economic development? I've summarized these, and I'll provide it in a more palatable format. I just went through each of the questions and kind of gave the top three. So, please, don't try to follow in that thing. It's, it's a lot of data, so I'll, I'll have it in a more palatable, uh, format. Three, the third top issue facing DeSoto is access to quality shopping and dining. And four, um, farmland, farmland preservation. Again, there's folks that really cherish that small-town atmosphere and rural living. Now, don't forget, now apartments, duplexes, and rental housing was a close fourth of, you know, major concern facing the city.
I find that kind of interesting, those two, about the sort of the ties, the agriculture and the land, and then you jump to, we need more apartments and more sort of density. It's kind of...
I didn't take it that way. I think they're concerned about, like, hey, wait a minute, we don't want. I, I take it as they're concerned about the apartments and the affordable housing. Like, they don't want it.
But there's, there's a interesting mix between, if you want the retail shops and, you know, restaurants, you've got to have more people, more dense. And so, yeah, there's just this kind of interesting dynamic between the sort of swirling around in DeSoto that...
Yeah. It might be done right. Like, the apartments, the K-ten, what are they called? K-ten apartments? Maybe those are good, but when you have a, an apartment which is an old historic home that they sort of gone in and chopped up and unilaterally just created into apartments, you know, maybe that's not, I don't know, I don't know. But it's a survey, so it's kind of generic. Overall, DeSoto's a good place to live, according to like eighty percent of respondents. Great place to raise a family. Should grow in size and population. Majority of respondents agreed. I thought I had retirement. Oh, yeah. DeSoto is a great place to retire, loosely about forty-eight percent, just a little below fifty percent. So, again, we're going to look further into that, you know, that, the, the senior, um, characteristics. We want to encourage silver sneakers, or whatever you, because that's what my parents, they get, they can go to the YMCA free because they're silver sneakers, they call themselves.
It's a good thing to have. It works.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Um, good place to visit, not so much, twenty-nine percent. The top strengths, you guys probably know this, schools, small-town atmosphere. Schools, okay, this is weighted out of five, best out of five. Schools got like four point four six. I mean, that's powerful. Two hundred and fifteen respondents, so even, even the seniors, which probably have children or grandchildren that are, that are out, maybe even out of school, are probably voting schools very highly. Schools, small-town atmosphere. The second, um, heavily weighted strength is the location, and tied for fourth is the Cal River, scenic vistas, and open spaces tied with parks and recreational programs. So, those are our strengths, um, as measured by the two hundred and fifteen or so survey respondents. Here's, which also very, very interesting, is the top, uh, public services, all of which were rated above average. But the top was fire, followed by trash and recycling, police, and then winter maintenance and snow plowing. Again, all, almost four out of five.
I find that interesting. We haven't flown snow in three years.
That's why it's so good. We just put a bunch of salt and beet seeds down. Preventative maintenance is always better.
Michael, take a compliment anyway. Hey, you want a compliment? Here we go. Um, I've got to point this out. I'm, um, and I'll stop here. I am generally pleased with the city's public services. Eighty-seven percent said yes. So, these gentlemen are doing the, I mean, eighty-seven percent, so, you know, that's, that's, that's amazing. Now, um, not all the questions are weighted that, that drastically, and those are the ones that kind of give us problems. For example, one of the things that we've been talking about internally, of course, is annexation. What do we do with the sunflower site? Well, one of the yes-no questions was, uh, the city of DeSoto should expand through annexation. Well, it's forty-three says yes, fifty-seven say no. You know, so that's, that's not giving us much info. I would support a tax or bond issue to fund street improvements? Fifty-fifty. You know, fifty percent says yes, fifty percent says no. We got the same results for, I would, I would support a tax or bond to fund park recreations. Fifty-fifty. So, I think the survey respondents are kind of like, they're not really supportive. They're kind of right down the middle, so, um, let's see. Sufficient housing options? Is there sufficient housing options? Fifty, fifty-five percent said yes. So, if there is a shortage of senior housing, the survey doesn't really indicate that. The city should have more parks and walking areas? Forty-eight said yes, fifty-two said no. Traffic congestion is a problem? Fifty-seven, almost sixty percent said no, it's not a problem.
I'm surprised at that number. There's no traffic here.
Yeah. You know, I think there's a couple, right outside of the high, the high school, though. I think right in front of the high school, the, the school comp, I bet that's bringing some people down. Oh, I lied. This, this is the one I want to leave it on. This, uh, the city does a good job with seasonal events. Eighty-nine percent said yes. That beat, that beat the city services. So, that's one thing you all do well, and that's one thing that we really want to do in this plan, is try to figure out a way to complement and come up with, with, with ways to better utilize the Cal and better utilize all the city's, you know, beautiful, you know, property that they have down there, and, and try to make better connections between the downtown, of course, K-ten, and then down to the city's parks. And the workshops and all the stakeholders have mentioned, you know, we need to figure out a way along Ottawa Street how to get to the downtown and, and not worry about crossing tracks and, and be able to just, you know, push a stroller down there, or, you know, bring a, bring a wagon for all the festivals and not have to drive your car. So, that's one of the things we'll be looking into, and I just took photos of the old, you know, the old water plant right there off, is that Wacarusa Street right there? The, you know, the, where you get, you get bulk water?
Shawnee.
Shawnee, that's right, Shawnee. I mean, that, that could provide a punch through to downtown, too, but... Anyway, I'm going to continue gathering information, summarizing the, um, you know, the two hundred and fifteen surveys. And the next chapter will be the, um, critical issues, and the critical issues will be a summary of the public engagement process to date. Brad's going to go ahead and, I think, turn off the survey monkey, so we're, we're going to, we've got all the surveys we need and that we're going to get, so we'll turn that off. At the next meeting, I'll have, uh, the public engagement summary or the critical issues report, and then from there, we'll go into the goals and objectives, and then we'll start looking at future land use maps. I didn't have any maps for you today, and Richard really wanted to see a map that I had come up with called the Development Constraints Map. That map was going to show all the, you know, steep slope areas, flooded areas, uh, floodplain areas, historic structures, and any other areas maybe with wetlands and stuff that can't be developed. I'm still gathering my GIS data, but once I have that, I'll be able to plug all that in, create a development constraints map. We already have a zoning map and an existing land use map. The next one would be a future land use map, and that's really the heart and soul of this document, where it points out where and how land should be used over the next twenty years. And that's what all of this effort, that's what all this data collection is going to help us develop. What types of, what area we want developed as residential, what kind of densities are appropriate for that type of property or that type of, that area? What areas should we contemplate for annexation? What areas are served or can't be served by sewer and water? So, we'll be looking at those items over the next few months. But that's all I have for today. I just wanted to help, you know, hopefully bring you guys up to speed to where myself and staff have been plugging away on the development of the Conference of Plan Update and kind of give you an idea of where we're headed. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them now.
Good job.
Very nice. Thank you.
I appreciate it. It's, it's been fun to work with, and it's a, it's a great town, and it's just a stone's throw away from where I went to college, so... And Lawrence, yeah, so, and my, my family has property, or my cousin has property in Lynnwood, so I've been, been able to stay just right across the river and backs up to, uh, was it Don Parr's estate, too?
So, what would be a true statement that? This document, when it's done, it's going to be a, um, a roadmap. This document, when it's done, it's going to be a roadmap. It's got to be flexible. I mean, you know, I mean...
Yeah, I think what you're looking for is not a blueprint. It's not a blueprint, it's more of a roadmap.
Yeah, okay.
But it's a tool the city can use, if I'm correct, in recruiting people to our town.
I think, I think it's, 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 it's an opportunity to have a marketing tool. We're going to look at downtown, I'm going to build from the, you have an excellent downtown plan that was developed right before the Great Recession. I think it's relevant now. I think the recommendations that they had back then are now things that could be accomplished. You know, so I think that's something we can look at. I think it's definitely a marketing tool. It is a flexible document, but it's also a legal document that you all will need to refer to, or staff would want to refer to from time to time, in considering any rezoning, any annexation, special use permit, you know, that type of stuff.
It's real important, I think, if, if the city's going to annex something. We look at this undevelopable, undevelopable land, or costs too much to develop, why annex that? Or, I mean, unless it falls within the square, so to speak, to square this off, but that's something to go, I mean, I think that's a pretty important, because we've got so much going on.
What Richard's talking about is we, I struggled a bit with our, our study area map. Like, oh, here's the city of DeSoto, okay, that's cool. Well, now, let's look at the, let's stand back a bit, let's look at the, the Sunflower plant. Holy cow, it's 9,000 acres. And then Richard said, well, so we just want to, we just want to share, we want to annex just portions of that. Well, based on what? Well, Mike said, well, we got to have utility access, we got to have water, sewer. Richard's like, we got to have access. So that's one of the things we'll look at on that Development Constraints Map. Remember, Richard, we said, let's look at, you drew out all those points of access. Well, that's, you know, if we can't get to it, we can't leapfrog. You know, we don't want to do leapfrog, we want to have, we want to be compact. You know, so it's easy to serve, it's affordable. So that's some of the things we'll be looking into. Do you guys have a date for your next meeting that we might, I could target? If I can't be here, what I'd like to do is continue giving you updates, so you guys can review them at your leisure. I was telling Brad, I, I prefer to do digital. Are you guys opposed to getting stuff via your, over their, you know, email, or are these documents exceeding the capacity of what you guys feel comfortable with getting online?
Is there such thing as a summary?
You're already wanting a summary.
I mean...
Yeah, I could do, I could do...
You know, this is a pretty good-sized PDF. I get this in an email, I'm on a, I mean, here I am, you know, Mr. Worried About, but I'm on a limited data program, this is probably two megabytes, two, three megabytes.
What about Dropbox?
Well, I can refer to a PDF, but, but...
Why not send it to the city and let them...
Yeah.
Just give us the stuff, we'll figure it out.
Okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Listen to these guys.
Listen to these guys, okay. But summary, executive summary kind of stuff, I don't know, but that's hard to do, and it gets us so many...
Yeah, we're not there yet. When we're finished with the document, Richard, I think that's a, a great idea. So if you're at a chamber meeting, or you're playing golf with some colleagues, say, here, here you go. And it could be just a few pages, it just gives us the highlights.
Our next meeting's July the 24th.
Yeah, one month.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's good. I'm going to, I'm going to Rome, so that's kind of a thing, so. But I think...
Rome's kind of a thing now? Don't kid me.
You're going to be roaming around, huh?
Well, I, but anyway, so I'll coordinate if I'm not here, I believe we're going to be back by then, but if I'm not here, I'll definitely give updates.
Okay.
My partner's a flight attendant, and, and believe me, this is, we haven't traveled, we haven't left the country yet, so that will be a first, but...
Well, we could always join you over there.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, yeah, okay. A destination.
Destination, I like it.
Planet Commission's got 800 bucks in the budget.
So I could go. I'm a Debbie Downer.
You're back.
All right, well, I've got the 24th down. If I'm not here, I'll definitely have, like I said, the critical issue summary, which will be a summary of that survey. And I'll continue, city clerk has already made some updates or some corrections in chapter one, so I'll continue to perfect that and continue building towards the completion of the update.
All right, well, thanks, Todd. Appreciate you coming down, and she'll be here tomorrow, we'll find, get together tomorrow morning. That's all we had, chairman?
That was a good presentation. Thank you a lot. Well, you guys got anything else?
There is no city council meeting on July 5th. That meeting has been canceled due to lack of a quorum, so the next council meeting will be the 19th.
Okay. Hope to see you all there.
We'll be at the July 24th.
Yeah.
I will.
Well, if, if nobody else has anything, motion to adjourn. Yeah, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion second?
I just made it.
Second? All pay, ride?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. We are adjourned.
I like chocolate.